All set.
Thank you, Sue. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the October 20th, 2020 Town Council Meeting to order. We'll begin with a roll call vote to open the meeting. Clerk Samino.
Counsel Erica.
Here.
Counsel Connors.
Here.
Counsel Flaherty.
Here.
Counsel Hume.
Here.
Counsel Mackin.
Here.
Counsel O'Brien.
Present.
Counsel Ringus.
Here.
Counsel Ryan.
Here.
Counsel Sasha.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We're going to take a couple of things out of order. Well, we're going to get two announcements, but the first thing, so there is a resolution on the agenda tonight. I just want to address that right off the bat. I did speak to Counsel O'Brien about it. This is out of order as it does not follow the council rules. I know when he quoted, he quoted Rule 3 and 8, which are actually our rules that are being proposed. So the rules he was actually quoting is 2 and 7, and this rule does not apply. So we will not be taking that up. It is out of order. And with that, I believe Counsel Flaherty would like to say something on that. Counsel Flaherty.
Certainly. I would like the residents of Braintree to know that I am sorry for the comment that I made on that Facebook post. Although it was not intended to be malicious, it was certainly thoughtless. I have been called to account for this on Facebook and in person, and it's clear to me that, you know, there are times when we are called upon to do better, to be better, and this is mine. I have apologized for this comment on Facebook and to veterans in person. And now I offer my apology to the Town Council and to the residents of Braintree. The work of the Committee on Elder Affairs and Veteran Services is important to me. And I am committed to working hard on behalf of the residents that this committee is meant to serve. I take my position as Chair of this committee very seriously, and there's never been a more important time for us to advocate for our elders and our veterans. To that end, I have been asked to give a little bit of an update on the process, the progress of this committee so far. So to begin with, there are some things that I think residents need to understand about how Town Council committees work. First, the committee is subject to all the same open meeting laws that the full council is subject to. We can't just get together over coffee and talk about ideas. It has to be a publicly posted meeting with a formal agenda, in the presence of the clerk of the council, with minutes taken, and so on. Also, there are meant to be two resources in Town Hall for the chairperson to use as guidance for what items the committee should pursue. One is the Director of Elder Affairs, and the other is the Veteran Services Officer. Now, it is worth knowing that the position of Veteran Service Officer has been vacant for most of the time that I have been in office. So in the absence of a Veteran Services Officer, I reached out to the Director of Elder Affairs, who is Charmela Beeswass, who is excellent. And what Ms. Beeswass told me she thinks Braintree seniors really, really need is senior housing. So I put a call in to Marta Gugans, who let me know that the current waiting time for senior housing in Braintree is about two years. So to me, that's demonstrated need. When the pandemic turned up and shut things down in mid-March, that slowed everything down in town government. But by the end of summer, it seemed like we had enough of a handle on it that I could call a meeting. So I did. And the main purpose of that meeting was to give residents an opportunity to share with us ways that they think this committee could be of greater service to the community. Some good ideas came out of that. One of them was related to housing. And that was whether 90 Pond Street could be employed for senior housing with veteran preference. So to follow up on that, I had a meeting with the mayor to discuss 90 Pond Street. We talked about its status right now and the value that senior housing with veteran preference could bring to Braintree. And I want to be really, really clear that this committee could not unilaterally determine where senior housing with veteran preference or any housing could go in Braintree. But what it can do is provide a platform for residents to learn about it, discuss it, share what they think, a platform for residents, I'm sorry, share what they think the right path for Braintree might be, and then we move that advocacy forward to Town Hall. So again, there was no Veterans Agent in Braintree, so I've gone to experts in surrounding towns. And through conversation with them, here are the items that I intend to pursue. First, a Veterans Donation Fund. This is something that both Weymouth and Situit already have. And what it amounts to is a voluntary fund that residents can contribute can contribute to, to be used to support our veterans. In Weymouth and Situit, it's typically used to host social gatherings like coffee hours or annual luncheons. These things are important because they help to combat loneliness. And second, some towns host veterans' fairs where vendors are gathered to sell, to tell veterans about services that they qualify for. So it's free for veterans, and you have to imagine a row of tables gathered together in Cahill Auditorium so that veterans could come and learn about services that they qualify for, like home loans, educational benefits, healthcare benefits, all kinds of things. So I think this is something, I know this is something that Braintree has done before. And unfortunately, I think it's unlikely to be something that we can do this year because of COVID. But what the committee can do is lay the groundwork by reaching out to these vendors now, so that when it is safe to host something like this, we'll be able to pull the pieces together quickly. It is my understanding that Town Hall is very close to having a Veterans Services Officer in place, and I look forward to meeting that individual. And I am fully open to hearing additional ideas from residents, and I look forward to seeing these items come together. We can do it if we work together, and I hope we will.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Moving on to other announcements, I have a, Counsel O'Brien, are you good?
Well, if I could just make one comment.
Go ahead, Counsel O'Brien.
I'm a little disheartened with the fact that I made a technical violation on my resolution, and I was hoping to be able to have an opportunity to withdraw it. But I'm going to withdraw it without prejudice, and I'm hoping that we can discover how we flagged on a technical violation. In the meantime, I'll stand down. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Brien. Okay, I have a couple of updates. Back beginning of summer, I had talked about having a consultant come in on diversity, equity, inclusion. We have chosen one, myself, the mayor, the chief police, Mark Dubois, and superintendent Dr. Frank Cackett worked together. I thank Dr. Frank Cackett for all his contacts, but we are working toward an agreement, and we'll have, plans are not finalized, but KW Diversity, Inc., a cultural proficiency, proficiency coach, has been selected. That is run by Ms. Kalise Warnham. As soon as we have all the details, I just want to make it very clear to the public, this is not going to be a Town Council meeting where we have this. This is a training session, a consulting session for the council, for department heads at the mayor's request, and possibly school committee as well. So again, as more information comes available, I will put that out there. Also, just want to congratulate the school committee and the schools, because all schools are now somewhat in-person learning. Braintree High School went back last week on a remote in-person schedule, two days a week for some of those students. I do realize not all students are in, because some have chosen not to do in-person learning in remote, but we are slowly moving forward. I have a student at the high school myself, and he was anxious to get back and happy to see all the teachers and friends. So congratulations to all the students and administrators and teachers and everybody that made that possible. Good luck to all the students. The mayor just announced today, his office did an announcement today on the Peterson Pool. He was going to be here to give an update, a status update on it, but because of the events that happened at the planning board, he requested that that be after the planning board votes on that. But they have put documents, including the latest plans, out there. Anybody looking to see this can go to the town website. It's braintreema.gov backslash four five four backslash five eight three five backslash Peterson dash pool. That's Peterson with an E N at the end. Anybody who didn't get that, you can call the clerk's office. Clerk Samino can give you the link or call the mayor's office on that as well. Thank you to Nicole Tauber, Town Solicitor and Chief of Staff, for getting that done. I think I have one more, but I do see Counsel Erica with your hand raised. So go ahead, Counsel Erica.
Thank you, President Hume. I did want to make the announcement, if people hadn't seen it yet, that starting Friday will be Red Ribbon Week, and thank you to Mary Coros for proclaiming it officially in Braintree. So Red Ribbon Week is the oldest and largest drug prevention awareness campaign promoting healthy, drug-free kids. It's the oldest one in the country. You can check out their website is redribbon.org. And you can get more information, but here in Braintree, now usually we do a lot of things at the schools for this week. But in, with, with the shutdown, the Braintree Community Partnership on Substance Use has partnered with B-CAM. So they'll be bringing children, it's ages four to nine, a reading of the beautifully illustrated book, The Red Ribbon, A Story of Hope. And you can watch it on B-CAM.TV this week, and it will include a craft activity, and the Substance Use Prevention Office has individually packaged crafts. You can pick them up at Town Hall up until Friday, the 30th. So thank you again to Mary Coros for making that official, and I hope everyone will take a minute to check redribbon.org.
Thank you, Counsel Erica. Any other council with an announcement? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes of September 2nd.
I'd like to make a motion to table to our next meeting.
It's been a motion to table those meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I heard Counsel O'Brien. Don't know who else, so we'll put it down. Counsel O'Brien, second to that, to table that. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote on that, to table the minutes of September 2nd, 2020.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin. Counsel O'Brien.
Yeah.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, Clerk Samino. We'll take those up at our next meeting. The next on the agenda, this is where we're going to jump out of order just for a brief moment. We're going to skip to our council rules, which is
00220.
Thank you, Counsel Ringus. With that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, President.
Here, aborting some rules, sorry on that.
No worries. Thank you, President Hume, and thank you, members of the council. I'm just going to move to table this to our next full council meeting to be addressed at that time.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counsel Ringus, seconded by Counsel Ryan, to table the council rules to our next meeting. Clerk Samino, a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Erica.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin. Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus.
Aye.
Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor.
unanimous. Thank you. So with that, we're moving on to communications and reports from the mayor and town boards, and we, 01220, Council President COVID-19 Update. We have with us as always Mary Beth McGrath, Director of Municipal Licenses and Inspections. Thank you so much, Mary Beth, for always being here with us and for all the work you and your staff have done on COVID. So with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Counsel President Hume and counselors. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you again this evening, and before we get started, I do want to thank Counsel Erica for her announcement of Red Ribbon Week. I will tell you that Lynn Frano and Miriam Barrett have been working very, very hard this week, last week and this week, putting packets together and preparing for that event. So they're very excited about it, and we look forward to all of those that will be participating in it and hope they enjoy the event. So I did want to update you on our COVID-19, and where we're at. So today we had six cases, six confirmed cases, bringing our total cumulative number to 1,110 cases. You know, the cases continue to occur, and we continue to receive them through our state communicable disease website, where it's something that we're always very concerned about having one case. But the cases are, they're pretty much staying on track with a steady confirmed number, which is a little disappointing, but I think every community in the Commonwealth is seeing the same. So I do want to make mention that we do have a, what I feel like is an important community event coming up, that being Halloween. And I know that the mayor has announced some, you know, just guidelines on the website and publicly about safe trick-or-treating. And I just wanted to mention that this evening, that although we feel like it's a very important event for the community and one that we'd like the residents to be able to continue and to enjoy, that I would ask that they're enjoying it in a very safe manner. And although a lot of Halloween costumes have face coverings or masks, they're not necessarily a face covering that we're using in our daily lives now. So the recommendation is that persons still wear those that were, that have face masks for their costumes, that they're still also utilizing face coverings, because a face mask may not fully cover the mouth and nose as the current face coverings do. So that's important. Also, to consider wearing gloves if possible, or carrying hand sanitizer with you when you're trick-or-treating. And also, as far as the offering of candy or trick-or-treating food items, consider placing those already prepackaged. So if you're going to offer candy, you know, consider placing them in baggies or something that's already prepackaged, so that persons that are collecting the candy are not sticking their hands into a basket full of items and then pulling from them. They're only getting one baggie or a little bag of the food items. So I just wanted to make mention of that, because there is an important event coming up. We are encouraging that house parties and large gatherings not occur, because that's definitely what we would consider a super-spreader of coronavirus. So we would ask and encourage that those types of events not occur, and that everyone just try and participate in the event in a very safe manner.
Thank you, Mary Beth. And can you just reiterate what the Labor Day and the spike, just because I know that was the concern when we're going into another holiday on a weekend. So if you will just address that for anybody who listened in previous meetings, I think it's very, very important.
Absolutely. Well, it's clearly been established, not only in the Commonwealth, but throughout the state, throughout the United States, that large gatherings, especially associated with events or holidays and things like that, that are occurring, are super-spreaders. And we are seeing spikes or have seen spikes in the past around those such events. Labor Day in Braintree was one of them, in that we were seeing a larger number occurring within the two weeks after the Labor Day event occurred, which, you know, we had reports of large gatherings of persons, not only in Braintree, but other locations throughout Massachusetts. And we were definitely seeing a spike in cases. So that's why we encourage people to enjoy the event and do it in a safe manner. We're absolutely encouraging that large gatherings and events, parties, and things of that nature not occur. And I realize that that, you know, is something that is a difficult thing for some to have to, you know, undertake. But right now, it's very important that we're all trying to prevent the spread of coronavirus. And the best way to do that is for social distancing and not have large gatherings and use of face coverings and proper hand sanitizing and hand washing, et cetera.
Thank you. Counsel O'Brien, you have a question for Director McGrath?
Yes, I, Director McGrath, great work, and I, you know, I think that you guys are doing a bang-up job. Can we get maybe information as to what color we are on the level map? And also, could you define large gathering? Because at one point it was 10, and I believe it went to 25. But perhaps it would be helpful for the residents to know what you define as large gathering. Thank you.
Well, so the, right now, the requirements for indoor gatherings cannot exceed 25 people. That's the state requirement. So I was certainly asked, I mean, and I even think to myself, 25 people can be a lot of people. You know, the thought is, well, if you're like, if it's a family unit and they're together all the time, that's one thing. But if it's guests that you don't normally see on a routine basis and wouldn't be around on a routine basis, then that's something else to think about, is that, you know, not having a large gathering like that. I would not encourage any more than 25 people, because we certainly don't want people to be in violation of the indoor gathering requirement. As far as the risk level and category that Braintree is currently, that we are currently in the yellow zone or yellow risk category, which means that it would be considered between four to eight cases per day, per 100,000 people. And that's been consistent about what, with what we're seeing. Now, the state Health Department updates that listing, that they review the color-coded risk level every Wednesday through the state's database, and they go back the two weeks prior to see what they're saying, and that determines what risk color or level a community would be in.
Counsel O'Brien, you good?
Thank you.
Counsel Mackin, and then Counsel Flaherty. Go ahead, Counsel Mackin.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Director McGrath, for everything you've been doing. So I know we've been keeping, you know, good track of the new number of cases. Are we also tracking, you know, recovery rates, or are we just assuming they go away? And kind of what I'm getting at there is, so, you know, we're at yellow right now. When do we know, say, if we drop back down to being green or white?
Well, we would know every Wednesday what color we're in, and I know that I track that usually late Wednesday evening, when I go on to the state's website to see where they're seeing our color code zone and which level we're in. As far as tracking those that have recovered, honestly, right now, I don't, I don't necessarily have the staff to continually call individuals, but we do advise them that they're either following their quarantine, if they're a close contact of 14 days, or if they're in isolation, the 10 days. And we try and make calls with them during those periods to see how they're doing, if they need any assistance from the town, if they need food, et cetera. And then oftentimes, we do have a lot of calls back, and we make calls to clients just to follow up with them and see how they're doing as time permits.
I'm just going to, before Counsel Flaherty, let you go. Mary Beth McGrath, if I can just ask that, because I was going to ask, but you just briefly touched on it. So prior to school getting back in, you had the school nurses helping you with the contact tra, contact tracing. With school back in session now, where are you in terms of staff and the level of support? Are they still working with you? Do you have enough that you need in order to do this in a timely fashion?
Well, what we've done, as you are absolutely 100% correct, so the school nurses, we are still working hand-in-hand with the school nurses, and they are now actually, they are still assisting us with contact tracing, but in a different level, in the school level. We have also brought, as you may, maybe aware, Jeanne McGinty is our public health nurse. Miriam Malready, a retired public health nurse, has joined us, come back and joined us. And we are fortunate to have Paula Dowd, who's retired school nurse director, come back and
I didn't know that.
Yes. So within the last two and a half weeks, Paula has rejoined us, because it's, we were simply, we just need the staff.
Yeah.
And they're doing a wonderful, wonderful job.
Well, that's good news. Thank you so much. Counsel Flaherty, thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. I don't have a question. Just a resident has asked me to remind people that this year, with regard to Halloween, this year more than ever, it's important to remind our kids that, that when somebody has their porch light off, they really, they're not participating, and we should not knock on their door. And although that is always true, this year, it seems more important than ever for people to emphasize that with their kids.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. And I want to add to Director McGrath's, your recommendation, I was reaching out to my friends to see what they were going to do. And a lot of people are putting a table at the end of the driveway and placing candy spread out on the table and letting people take it, and they keep at a distance, so they can still see the kids enjoying it. So there's so many different levels out there of how people can participate in this. And as Counsel Flaherty said, if people are not comfortable with it, that's their right, and please be respectful of that. Anything further from the council for Director McGrath? Anybody else? Seeing none. Thank you, Director McGrath.
Thank you very much.
Great to have you. Okay, moving on to old business, item 20068, property owner petition request for gas installation to 86 Hancock Street, or take up any action relative there, too. We do have the property owner here with us tonight. It's Chris Sedoti. He's the president of Integrated Electrical Systems, Inc. He recently closed on a property May 15th of 2020. So as he said earlier before the meeting, welcome, Chris, to Braintree. I had the opportunity to speak with you a couple of weeks back when you were looking to do this. His intention is to move their current offices and warehouse from 258 Willard Street in Quincy to 86 Hancock Street in Braintree. Department of Public Works Committee took this up earlier. I refer to Counsel Ryan, the chairman of this committee, for his recommendation. I just want to make note, we do have our DPW director with us here tonight, Jim Arsenal, as well as Assistant DPW Director John Thompson. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The Department of Public Works Subcommittee met earlier this evening and voted unanimously for a favorable recommendation to the full council for this petition. This business owner, as the president stated, is relocating his electrical contracting company business from Quincy to Braintree. And it's going to be located at 86 Hancock Street. He is looking at upgrading the facility and doing a lot of work to clean up the property. One of the issues that he has is he wants to upgrade the heating system and have gas heat option for the facility. And what he learned, unfortunately, is he does not have a gas connection at the facility, his neighbors do, but he is not connected. So he went to National Grid, and they informed him that Hancock Street had recently been done over, and he would need to come before the Town Council and petition the council to be able to connect to the line. As you know, we have modified the, the moratorium on street openings, and we really want to protect the streets. So National Grid doesn't come in and dig them up. National Grid looks at our capital program and knows when we're doing streets over, and they do their gas lines over first. And that's when really the gas line is going parallel down the street for a long run. And what we've done is we modified the ordinance, so that when a homeowner or a business owner wants to connect, we're here to serve them, and we try to make it work for them. So this connection would be coming out of the 86 Hancock Street driveway and connecting out in the roadway. And for the first, for the rest of this year, we would have a temporary trench in place and let it settle. And next year, the, the owner, Chris, would have to come back and do curb-to-curb rehabilitation on the roadway. And that is what full-time staff from the DPW department has recommended, if we approve this permit. And we think that if he puts it back in pretty much the shape he finds it, we could live with it. Again, we're, we're trying to protect the roadways when they're done over, but we also want to, you know, bring new business into the town of Braintree. And so we voted unanimously to recommend favorable, for favorable recommendation to the full council, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. I know we have DPW Director Jim Arsenal. Do you want to say anything on this, or Assistant Director Thompson?
Sure. So I think Counsel Ryan said, said it very eloquently. So so it's, you know, there are some, you know, driving up a road, we never want to see that happen, but obviously, we were trying to make sure that we to keep the integrity of the road as much as possible by doing a number of measures, and we feel that it should be sufficient to, to address any concerns.
Thank you. And the business owner, Chris Sedoti, would you like to say anything, where you have the full council and residents here with us tonight? Not to put you on the spot, you don't need to, but while you're here joining, you just need to unmute if you could.
And now you can hear me.
Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to say that I, you know, I intend to live up to my obligations of putting the road back the way it was, it was found as close as possible within the guidelines of the town, and I appreciate, you know, you know, going forward with this process and getting the approval of the, of the DPW to move forward with it. And I look forward to being a good neighbor and a good business owner in the town of Braintree.
Well, thank you. We're glad to have you here, and thank you for that. I see Counsel Erica, you had your hand raised, and then Counsel O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, President Hume, and thank you, Mr. Sedoti. I know you and I had a chance to connect as well, and I appreciate your time and investing in Braintree. I have a few questions, President Hume, and if you'll allow me, maybe I can just set them forth, and I don't know if they'd be for Director Arsenal or for the business owner. So I think this probably for his Director Arsenal. The DPW, did I misunderstand? The DPW, did I misunderstand, when I read the paperwork, did not recommend this project?
Yeah, we typically, we typically make that statement because the ordinances and rules say that it's not to be disturbed. And, you know, we never want to see fresh asphalt disturbed.
Yeah.
It's never a good thing. But, you know, given the circumstances, the council has, has a right to make a decision to move forward, and we, and we always put in place adequate measures that we feel are sufficient to, to address most of the concerns. It's not perfect, but it gets as close as we can.
And then do we know, or President Hume, if you'll allow me, do we know how long the work is expected to take? I know the road moratorium starts, I think, November 15th, or construction moratorium on roads. Do we know how this project would, would take?
Yeah, we actually shut down on the 20th.
Okay.
It's different every year. But it should only take, for, for just doing one, one home, I don't think it would take more than, than probably a day or, or two at most to get it done. So it wouldn't take very long, and then they would patch it over, and that would be about it. It's, it's not like a project where you're doing an entire roadway or taking mains out, it's just a, a connection from the main to the home. So it's, it's rather small work, work activity.
Okay, I think my concerns are sort of threefold. The first is, and I don't know, Mr. Sedoti, if you've had a chance to connect with the abutters or provide any outreach to the abutters. Hancock Street is a major traffic headache on a day when there's no construction happening on it. And I'm just, I'm feeling uneasy about doing anything that might disrupt the current businesses that are in the square and down along Hancock Street. So I think my question's twofold, like, one, have you had a chance to connect with the abutters and alert them or get, do any outreach to them? And then, do we have a traffic management plan in place even for a one or two-day construction project? That, that's gonna be tough when those businesses, I just, you know, are struggling for every car that can, can pass by.
Who would like to answer that?
I could probably.
Director Arsenal, go ahead.
Madam Counselor.
Yep, go ahead, thank you.
So normally, what happens is, when, part of our permit approval process, we make sure that they give a traffic plan to us to make sure it's being addressed from National Grid. So it normally wouldn't be the actual applicant, it would usually be something from National Grid who would contact us and make sure that that's addressed. And you are correct, it is a very busy road, and we may, as noted on the response, there may need to be police details or whatever is appropriate, which probably would be police details, to, to make sure that's addressed and safe. In addition to signage and cones and all that stuff too, so.
Thank you. And one more question, President Hume. Do we have any, any purview over which days of the week this construction would occur?
Madam Counselor, so, so, yeah, we typically, National Grid determines when they feel they can, can implement, and then if there was any concerns, like it was a special holiday or something was going on, we, we could tell them that we don't feel it's appropriate, and we could, you know, we could probably tell them to, we would definitely tell them not to take it that day. We definitely have purview if we feel there's some condition out there that would make it restrict, have, have a problem, we would let them know. We meet with National Grid every week at our regular meetings, so we have direct contact on a regular basis.
Thank you, Director Robertsonall. I think that's all I have, President Hume. And Mr. Sedoti, I do want to emphasize, I definitely, you know, agree that I'm sure you will be a good neighbor as well, and just want to make sure that we're looking out for the residents and the businesses along Hancock Street as you join us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Barica. Counsel O'Brien, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate new business, I definitely am a fan, especially a small business, and we're living in a very tough time for small businesses. But as a steward of this community, I would be remiss if I approved this. This roadway was just done in 2019, we're not even talking 2018. This stuff is barely dry, and we're gonna dig it up again. One of the frustrating parts of my job when I was on DPW, when prior to that, was watching National Grid come in and dig up our streets, year after year after year. And thank goodness for the DPW committee that put on some level of moratorium, but now they're gonna speak out both sides of their mouth for a 2019 roadway. I could understand, even if it was 2017, I might, I probably wouldn't be going like, having any commentary. But 2019, we're only at 2020, folks, think about that when you make your vote, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel O'Brien. I believe Counsel Shasha was next, and Counsel Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I would just echo Counselor O'Brien's concerns, and I know that we can waive the moratorium under extenuating circumstances, but, and maybe this was covered at the DPW committee meeting, but I haven't heard, what are the extenuating circumstances that make this something that needs to be done in 2019 as opposed to 24, 23, 22? Is this something that really can't wait, so that we can leave this newly paved street in its condition for a while? Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'll speak to that because the business owner purchased the location earlier this year, not knowing there was no gas and wants to improve the property. Counsel Ryan actually is the one who brought the moratorium rule before the council in the past, and as he stated earlier in this meeting, we have made exceptions for residents and businesses to do so, to improve the property, to improve the town, to make it better. So I will be supporting this. I, I do understand Counsel O'Brien's point and the concerns being made tonight about digging it up, which we, it was put in place so National Grid couldn't come in anytime and dig up the roads, for whatever reason. We wanted to get, get them to fit and look ahead and look at the projects ahead and set some schedule. But we are here, we do, it is our job to take care of our residents and the businesses, and we have a business here tonight who chose Braintree, wants to improve the property, improve the neighborhood. Yes, it is going into the road, but has made, you know, his word and said he will improve the property, and we do, I mean, Director Arsenal, correctly if I'm wrong, you will are supporting this project, although you did say you're not, just because ordinance and rules, but it's coming out of ordinance and rules with a favorable recommendation. Who, the moratorium originated from ordinance and rules, am I correct, Director Arsenal on that?
Madam President. Yes, we typically say, because it's rules and, because of the ordinances and regulations, we typically deny, we always say that. But we, we realize that there are extenuating circumstances that may come about where the council may want to approve it, so we put rules and, we put conditions in it that bring it as closely to the new condition as we possibly can.
Thank you.
So it's really up to the, the will of the council to decide.
Okay. Counsel Flaherty, you're next, go ahead.
Thank you. Usually, when I look at these requests, if the roadway is still under moratorium, then to me, it's easy to dismiss this out of hand. I mean, in this case, however, I think there are a couple of mitigating factors that deserve some attention. The first is that the cost of repaving the road will not be borne by the town. The second is, the gas line will be laid horizontally across the road rather than vertical, vertically down the length of the street. So that's substantially less damage than you would experience if you were dealing with National Grid trying to work down the whole line. Also, and this is really the most important point to me, we want to emphasize that Braintree welcomes small businesses, we're happy to have you here, we want to support you.
Oh, we lost, excuse me, Counsel Flaherty, hold on, we just lost you on the sound. Can anybody else hear her? Nod, yes, no? Okay. Counselor Flaherty?
We can't hear her. It was put together the way it should be. Oh, thank you.
There she goes. We missed a lot of what you said, because your audio, we lost you on the audio. So whatever you ended, if you want to repeat it, otherwise.
Um, okay, well, I think usually I would dismiss this out of hand because it's the road, because the roadway is still under moratorium, and it was really just paved in 2019. So I understand the frustration that's being put forward by, by some of our counselors, because I felt it too. But there are mitigating factors that I think should be taken into consideration, and one of those is that the cost of repaving the road will not be borne by the town, so that's important to me. And secondly, the gas line will be laid horizontally across the street rather than vertically down the length of the roadway, the way it would be if, if National Grid was working down, down the line. So there's somewhat less damage there. And third, and really, this is the most important one, we want to emphasize that Braintree welcomes small businesses. We're happy to have you here, we want to support you, especially now, especially when it's so difficult out there. We know it's not easy out there. And so finally, I take Mr. Sedoti at his word that, that he will take care of this right, and so I'm willing to support this because I, I have confidence that he will make a good faith effort to see to it that our roadway is put back in, in the condition that it deserves to be in.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Counsel Connors, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say, welcome to Braintree. I will be supporting this, and I am sure as a good neighbor, you will make sure that it gets back to the condition that it needs to get to remain in place and be preserved for the next few years. This will be a first test as a good neighbor. So welcome to Braintree.
Okay, anybody else from the council? Oh, no? Okay, seeing none. Back to you, Counsel Ryan.
Counsel, President.
Counsel Barica, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. I think, you know, and I appreciate everybody's comments, it's really helpful to listen to what everyone has to say, and I take seriously the recommendation of the DPW committee. I am wondering if, and President Hume, tell me if this is, if this is not possible, if Mr. Sedoti would be willing to at least notify the abutters, I, I just, nobody likes surprises, there is a ton of construction fatigue, as I'm sure everybody knows, on Hancock Street. And I think, you know, it would put people's minds at ease if, listen, this is a one or two-day project, feels a lot different than this is gonna be full summer long, as Counsel O'Brien mentioned. Anybody who was down in Braintree, South Braintree Square, anytime in 2019, it was, it was torn up, and all for good reason. But there's a lot of residents who live on the side streets there, on the abutters list, who, you know, just don't want to have any surprises with, with construction.
I think Director Arsenal, if you'll work with DPW and Clerk Samino, we can make that happen and get it out to all the abutters, because I think we would be in a better position to know who they are and how to reach them than to the business owner. Would you agree, Clerk Samino and Director Arsenal?
If I may.
Clerk Samino, go ahead.
Everybody does have a listing of the abutters, along with Mr. Sedoti. That's already been given to all of us, including DPW and, and the homeowner.
So is it typically, it's not the business owner who notifies the abutters, correct? So if we just, Director Arsenal, go ahead.
So typically, it's National Grid who's supposed to notify the abutters for it, so, you know, we can definitely make it clear to National Grid that they need to do that, that's not a problem, if, if that's the will of the council.
I think we need to, like, make sure, because I know in the past, and I think, I don't want to speak for Counsel Barica, but sometimes the abutters have not been notified when we put it in the hands of National Grid, so if we can somehow come to some consensus that either they give us all the materials, the letters, the priest, whatever it may be, Director Arsenal, if you could take care of that work with National Grid, make sure we get them out to the abutters, is that something you can do?
Yeah, I can, I can, I'll contact National Grid, I mean, they've, they've been really helpful this past year, we had concerns about notifying abutters, and they've done well, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So, again, a previous counsel said that the DPW committee was talking out of both sides of its, of their mouth, and I take exception to that statement. When we did the moratorium over a few years back, we made it, we made it go to longer, longer than five years for, for parallel street openings, and that was mainly because National Grid would come in and dig the streets up after we did them over, and that's the biggest problem we have in the town of Braintree. We give National Grid our five-year capital program of the streets we're gonna do over, and it seems like they disregard it in many situations. So we want to make sure they take it very seriously, so we look to try to firm that up and make them pay attention when we give my capital program. We relaxed the rules for homeowners and for business owners, we reduced it from five years down to three years, I believe, because we're here to help homeowners and business owners in the town of Braintree. So I'm not talking out of both sides of my mouth, I'm trying to help the residents, that's who we are here to represent, the residents and business owners. So this business owner didn't have our capital program in his hands when he bought this property. He wants to upgrade the facility and put in gas equipment where he can, heat his building with natural gas and have hot water with natural gas. These are, these are capital improvements he's gonna make to this facility this year, this heating season, so there is a time-sensitive nature for this. I don't mean to put words in your mouth, Chris, but these are decisions that have to be made now. He did not have a capital program given him saying, you should have done this work two years ago before we did the street over. I think we have to be reasonable and make reasonable decisions to help homeowners and business owners in the town of Braintree. And where he's coming out, he's only impacting the road rate right in front of his business, and he's gonna do curb-to-curb repairs, he's gonna try to put it back as close as he can, this is something we can live with. Sometimes you gotta make tough decisions when you're on the council, and I think this is the right decision, supporting a business, it's pretty tough times right now, so I'm gonna be supporting this. But I'm certainly not talking out of both sides of my mouth when I'm supporting this, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ryan. So with that, if you would read the motion, please, Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The motion to install, the, the motion to install a gas service line in the business at 86 Hancock Street with staff recommendations from Beld, there are no underground electric utility conflicts or special requirements within the proposed scope of work. DPW, Hancock Street is under moratorium and moratorium enacted by the town in 2015, having been overlaid in 2019, for transverse trenches in a roadway resurfaced as Hancock was, was the moratorium is five years. Road openings may be made after 2024 without waiving the ordinance. Since the street is under moratorium, the DPW recommends that the petition not be granted. However, if the council finds extenuating circumstances and no viable option to meet the business needs without excavating the newly repaved street, we recommend that the, this petition for this roadway opening only be granted if the following conditions can be met. A temporary patch shall be placed immediately after the work. The street excavation should be saw cut, backfilled and compacted in eight-inch lifts, paved to match existing asphalt depth with a minimum depth of four inches, and two-inch lifts to match the existing street grade. After maintaining the temporary patch through one winter, a permanent patch shall be placed the following May. The permanent patch should be milled curb-to-curb as to provide at least five feet of overlap on both sides from the temporary patch for a length with no less than 15 feet, machine laid with two inches of asphalt top course. Tap, top, task coat should be applied to milled surfaces in joints prior to paving. Finished joint should be treated with infrared or with rubberized asphalt, asphalt seal at the highway superintendent's discretion. Similarly, with the new concrete sidewalks, may be patched temporarily with asphalt, but must be replaced in kind the following May. Entire flags of concrete must be replaced if disturbed. All thermoplastic pavement markings should be repaired in kind following the permanent patching, and surety in the amount of 5,000 should be placed to guarantee the satisfactory complete, completion of the repairs. We also recommend that following requirement be added to the permit if it is granted, and that's just that they can't close the street and have, they need to have DPW and roadways and police details. So moved, Madam. And that's just that they can't close the street and have they need to have DPW and roadways and police details. So moved, Madam Chairman.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ryan, seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Council Brian has his hands raised.
Counselor Brian for discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have one word as we close this out and make a decision. 2019. Thank you.
Go ahead, Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Baraka.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
No.
Counselor Ringus is not present. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Sasha.
No.
That's seven in favor. I'm sorry, six in favor, two opposed.
Seven in favor, two opposing, right, okay. Thank you, Clerk Samino. Mr. Sodadi, you are all set with us. Thank you for being here tonight and good luck on with your business.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. You could, you're welcome to stay with us if you'd like.
Oh, I have to get up early in the morning.
Understood.
I appreciate it.
Take care. I just wanted, my apologies, I should have had this come up before. We have clerk, our town clerk with us, Jim Casey, who, as you all know, we are facing a rather important election come this November 3rd. So I'm going to just give turn it over to Jim for a brief update on what voting, how people can vote, times, dates, and what have you. Clerk Casey, go ahead. You just need to unmute, please.
You, we unmute. Thank you all. Thank you for having me this evening. I'd just like to remind the voters of Braintree that each day until October 30th, we will be holding in person voting at Braintree Town Hall. We open each morning at 8:30 a.m. And on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, we're open until 4:30 p.m. On Fridays, Saturdays, and yes, Sundays, we're open until 1:30 p.m. And like this evening, Tuesday night, we're open until 7:00 p.m. to greet all the voters of Braintree to cast an in person early ballot. And right now that it's been pretty successful. We've had a little over than 2,100 people visit us at town hall to cast a ballot. I'd like to see more of you show up. Okay, so any questions, you can call my office at 781-794-8240. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Casey. And for those of you at home, there are many options available for you to vote. If you have not seen Town Hall or even the three voting places that will be set up on November 3rd. It is very safe. I know I, for one, was concerned when and then I saw it. It is socially distanced. There is plenty of space. The setup that the clerk's office and all his staff have put in place, I commend all of you. It is well thought out. It's a great plan put in place. You come in one door, you exit the other. It's very well done. They've been working tirelessly. So I thank you, Jim, and all your staff. And our very own clerk of the council, Sue Casey. Sorry. Our very own clerk of the council, Sue Samino. Works in the clerk's office during election season. So she will be out there on Election Day all day and has provided support with the early voting and all that. So Sue, thank you for all you do for the council and well as the clerk's office to ensure and support all them. So voters have every opportunity to vote that they feel comfortable. So Jim, thank you for being with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. Good night.
Thank you. Take care. Okay, back to the agenda. Item 20069, the mayor requests for appropriation, Smelt Brook Culvert. Excuse me, and Fisheries Habitat Restoration or take up any action relative thereto. This is a public hearing. Is there a motion?
Open the public hearing.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ryan, seconded by Counselor O'Brien to open the public hearing on 20069. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Baraka.
Yes.
Counselor Connors.
Aye.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Hume.
Aye.
Counselor Mackin.
Aye.
Counselor O'Brien.
Aye.
Counselor Ringus is not present. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Counselor Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to let everybody know we do have with us in attendance Christine Stickney, who is a director of planning and community development. We also have with us here tonight Ed Spelman, representing the mayor's office. He is with, he is the director of municipal planning and finance. So great to have both of you here with us. With that, I will refer to the chairwoman of Committee on Ways and Means, Counsel Baraka, for your recommendation to the council.
Thank you very much, President Hume. The Ways and Means Committee met earlier this evening, and I know Director Stickney will be able to provide additional color on this, but just for some background for the council and the members of the public. So the smelt brook runs through Waymouth Landing, and after more than a century of development above the brook, the towns of Waymouth and Braintree were collaborating on a rehabilitation of this natural resource. Protecting the ecology and enhancing the environment is a component of the revitalization of the landing. The smelt brook rehabilitation is one facet of a multi-year plan to improve the Braintree Waymouth regional environment and its recreational resources. So the town of Waymouth is contributing 60% of the funding for this project and the remaining 40%, the appropriation that's being requested tonight is coming from Braintree's Community Preservation Act funds. And as a reminder, so the CPA funds are not part of the town's operating budget. They are collected through a 1% surcharge that all of us pay on our property taxes, which is then matched, a portion of which is matched by the state. And it's to be used, there's specific conditions to be used for work such as this. So at the Ways and Means Committee meeting earlier this evening, we voted unanimously to favorably recommend this appropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Baraka. Anybody from the mayor's office wish to speak? Director Stickney, you want to speak on this?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yes, this has been a long time in coming. It's also been part of the mitigation from the commuter rail reactivation in the station. As people may recall, the DEP required about 150 linear feet of the smelt brook be open to daylighting. It was in another location. We worked with DEP to relocate it where it is being done today. And it's, I think it will be more beneficial to the area. It runs from the street at the building of the El Cerrape. There used to be a barber shop there and on the other side was the old mill grill. And it runs to the east and then down to the Waymouth Four River. So it's a two-phase project. Phase one was the under Commercial Street, the culvert work. You had to have a special type of flooring put in the culvert that allows the or it actually replicates the natural bottom of a stream for the fish to be able to spawn. That's been done. I think everyone saw the construction. It disrupted the landing for quite a bit, but that part of it is done and we had a restriction with the grant, but we also had a restriction on the months that we could work because of the spawning season. So the first phase has been completed. The second phase, which will be coming at a later date to your council, involves the park development above surface and around the smelt brook daylighting. So we're very anxious to have this done. It's probably the final stage of everything we've been trying to do in the landing. And it's been great working with the town of Waymouth.
Thank you, Director Stickney. Counselor Ryan, then Counselor O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm going to be supporting this. I imagine everyone's going to support it because it's a wonderful idea. So there's no shock there. But it's something that the town has been working on for a very long time, as Christine said. You know, having a smelt travel upstream to Pond Meadow, having the herring run eventually up to the reservoir, having these natural things reintroduced and brought back is going to really enhance the town of Braintree and for residents to be able and families to be able to watch this. It'd be, it's great. I know a lot of people have worked with the the state and on this for many years. My friend Kyle Palowski is on the Four River Watershed Association. He's been doing great work. I know people like Robert Kearns have been actively involved with this as well. So this is something that I've been working with the town since I was a selectman 14 years ago. We've been working on these projects. So it's something that's really nice to see coming to fruition after so long. And I hope we continue to get this done and and finalized. So thank you so much for everyone that's been actively involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor O'Brien, go ahead. Then Counselor Sasha.
Thank you, Madam President. Director Stickney, perhaps you can shed a little light on something because when I first sat as a counselor, and this precedes my time. But of course, I'm in the district where the train station is. It was my understanding that the MBTA provided the town of Braintree enough funds to perform this work. But Waymouth, since they were in such a state of disarray, somehow agreed to hold off until such time as DeLagus, who is the property owner of the, what is FD or maybe it's in process, I don't know, but he wasn't ready to do his work. And I know this was extensive work. And by the way, you know, I support this, but my question is, I thought, or I guess my statement is, and that's what I'm looking for color. I was advised that the T gave us all this money to do it. We ended up giving it to Waymouth. Waymouth did something with the money that was not specific to this. And then they ran out of funds. And now they're coming to Braintree for more funds. Maybe you can shed some light on that because I'm very disappointed in the fact that Braintree has to shell out more funds, if my information is correct, and I'm hoping it's not.
If I may, through the Madam Chairman.
Absolutely, Director Stickney, go ahead.
So if you remember, we active reactivated the commuter rail in 2007, and there was a mitigation package for many communities that got stations. We split our station with the town of Waymouth. At that time, including the, there were a number of mitigative measures and this daylighting was only one of many things that we were working with. The funds were given to the town of Waymouth for some of the items. Some of the things was the public parking that we did here in Braintree. But that daylighting was to go across the back of Landing 53, where it is today, and it was a 13 foot cut. Hardly any sunlight would make it 13 feet down into the ground for the fish. So plans were drawn and designed for that, but because it wasn't really feasible to perform what it needed to do for the spawning, and it didn't work with the overall master plan for the landing, we petition DEP to relocate it. All that the order required was that we provide 150 feet. In this new location, it's a little bit over 160 feet that we've done. It's much shallower. The fish can get the daylight and people can actually see the fish. So to answer your question, half of that is correct and half of it is that the funds were used for the other location. And I would point out that the funding for this is through a Mass Works Grant Fund that both towns applied for. It was 1.6 million we received. And we then got an additional 600 and change after that. So really, for $400,000, we're getting quite a bit for it. The culvert is now been done. It's never been done for years underneath Commercial Street. And we're going to have a nice park with the daylighting that will be coming off the street and go into the back of the property. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Counselor O'Brien. Are you good?
Well, if I could, I saw another hand up, but if I could just extend that.
Yep, continue.
Yeah, thank you. But I understand that there was documentation from the Army Corps of Engineers. And they were working on reconstructing that and redirecting that already. So if the Army Corps of Engineers had worked on it, and I assume we spent money with them or maybe Waymouth did or whatever, but I thought they did some design work. And again, I'm hoping I'm wrong. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I couple of things that the Corps has been involved in. The Army Corps has jurisdiction all the way up to Pond Meadow Park. So we have been working with them and the Board of Directors of the Pond Meadow Park on a couple of items. You know, they put in that big pipes, I think it's like 92 inches, that diverts all the flooding for those that have been here for years. It used to always flood in the landing. And that was put in many years ago. But their charge was with flooding where this has been for habitat restoration as part of the T. So there is some work that they're doing upstream, but this work was always part of the MBTA mitigation and you know, the overall master plan for the landing.
One more comment. I'm going to approve it because it's absolutely needed and I think it's going to definitely add value to the landing. The landing basically is always in need of help and fortunately, aside from the traffic, it it looks good, but I'm going to do it with some level of disappointment because I don't believe, I I believe that money was given away, that they squandered it. I know it's bad for me to say on this thing, but regardless, they spent it elsewhere and now we're spending more money and I'm just disappointed in that. But I, of course, am going to support it. I'll stand out. Thank you.
Counselor Sasha, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to echo Counselor Ryan's sentiments and say, this will be, this will be great for the businesses in the in the landing. It will be great for the residents, great for the fish, I presume. And thank you, Director Stickney. It's great to see some of these, you know, final pieces of the landing coming into place because it really that little piece, I think, will make a big difference and it's great to see this happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sasha. Any other counsel wish to speak on item 20069? Seeing none. Anybody from the public wish to speak on 20069? If you do, use your raise your hand feature. I do not see any hand raised. With that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
There's been a motion made by Counselor Ryan, seconded by Counselor O'Brien to close the public hearing. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Sorry about that. Counsel Baraka.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
It's all about the fish. Aye.
Counsel Ringus is not present. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor.
Thank you, Clerk Samino.
Thank you, Madam. Madam Chairman, I have a motion that in accordance with the provisions of chapter 44B of the general laws and with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee that the appropriation of 250,000 from the CPA Open Space Fund for the Smelt Brook Culvert Fisheries Habitat Restoration Project Phase One in the landing located beneath Commercial Street running west to east at number six, cross number five at the corporate line with the town of Waymouth. Condition on the funds expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Director of Planning and Community Development. So moved.
Second.
Then a motion made by Counselor Ryan, seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Baraka.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is not present. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor. Zero opposed.
You, Clerk Samino, that is unanimous. Moving on to new business. There is none in old businesses. We are moving on to referrals. Items 04520, refer to Education and Library Committee, Counsel O'Brien, and analysis of the 2020-2021 pandemic school reopening or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion?
Second.
Been a motion made by Counsel Ryan, seconded by Counsel O'Brien for a referral. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Baraka.
Yes.
Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Counsel Ringus is not present. Counsel Ryan.
Aye.
Counsel Sasha.
Yes.
That's eight in favor.
Is unanimous. Thank you. Another referral. This is to the Committee on Ways and Means, item 20070, the mayor appointment of William J. Grove to the planning board member or take up any action relative thereto. Is there a motion for referral?
So moved.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Go ahead, Counsel O'Brien. There is no discussion on referrals, sorry.
Isn't he already on the planning board?
But Planning Board Member Bob Harnes is leaving, so he's an alternate now. He is, this is up for his appointment.
Sorry, motion, yeah.
There's been a motion made for the referral by Counsel Ryan, seconded by Counsel O'Brien, Clerk O'Brien. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Baraka. Yeah. Counsel Connors.
Aye.
Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Hume.
Aye.
Counsel Mackin.
Aye.
Counsel O'Brien.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus is not present. Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Sasha.
Yes.
Eight in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Okay, there's no further business. We're going to head, take up one final vote, because our next scheduled meeting is November fourth, which is the day after the election. So we don't have any business to attend to that requires a vote that night. Plus, as I mentioned earlier, our own Clerk Samino is working Election Day, which is at least a sixteen-hour day. So if it's the will of the committee, if we can cancel that meeting and move on to our next regular scheduled meeting, which would be Tuesday, November seventeenth. This is, uh, the mayor's office has already been looked at this. There's nothing requiring any, uh, votes, deadlines, anything. That's why we're looking to cancel the next meeting. So is there a motion, Councilor Ryan?
Motion to cancel the town council meeting on Wednesday, November fourth.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion by Councilor O'Brien. Go ahead.
Madam President, when we resurface, can we activate Section three dash six A of the town, um, charter that states that the community, uh, that in the communication to the council, that within twelve weeks after the fiscal year, and I'm paraphrasing, the mayor should come before us to give us a status of the health of the town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Sasha, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, I know we don't have any urgent business, um, that, but, um, we do have the council rules that are, are significantly overdue at this point. Um, and I wouldn't say they're urgent, but, um, if, if, you know, I, I honestly, I would like to keep that meeting or just reschedule it to a, a different night if that, if the fourth doesn't work. But these rules are, are pretty well overdue, and I'd like to see us actually finally approve them at some point. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Mackin, you have your hand raised for the motion that's on the table, please?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilor Sasha actually read my mind. Um, I was thinking the same thing. These rules, we started working on them in February, I believe, and, um, you know, we just voted the table and tonight. And as you, that's not urgent business to the town, but, um, we shouldn't say we have nothing on the agenda if we can't even get those done. So I'm going to vote no.
Okay, thank you. Anybody? Okay, there's a motion made by Councilor Ryan, seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Clerk Samino, roll call vote, please.
Councilor Berika.
No.
Councilor Connors.
Nay.
Councilor Flaherty.
No.
Councilor Hume.
Yes.
Councilor Mackin.
No.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus is not present. Councilor Ryan.
Yes. No.
It's five in favor, three opposed.
All right, so we will be meeting next time. So our next scheduled meeting will be November fourth at seven-thirty. Uh, I want to thank Bill Needham and Fred Hansen. Bill Needham with B-CAM, who is with us tonight and always televising our meetings uh, for future. And Steve Leary is with us here from the mayor's office. Thank you, Steve, for getting these Zoom meetings up and running and recording. And Fred Hansen from the Patriot Ledger as well. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Then a motion made by Councilor Ryan, seconded by Councilor O'Brien. Clerk Samino, roll call vote.
Councilor Berika.
Yes.
Councilor Connors.
Aye.
Councilor Flaherty.
Yes.
Councilor Hume.
Aye.
Councilor Mackin.
Aye.
Councilor O'Brien.
Aye.
Councilor Ringus is not present. Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
Councilor Sasha.
Yes.
All in favor to adjourn.
Good night, everybody.